Walk out this meeting over. I've been in about a year. Been with some people in the county. Before we'd like to get started, I'd like everybody to personally turn your phone down or turn the rear off. Remove your hand on last job button, the lead is going to work forever.
Alright.
Everybody remains standing and do the paperwork.
Don't forget this, everybody, God is good. Heavenly Father, we thank you that your goodness and mercy endures forever. And Lord, we love our county, we love these guys sitting up there, we love each other, but we love you more. And our health comes from the Lord. So help us to have your mind today, make right thoughts, good decisions, so our county can go forward in Jesus' name and everybody's sake.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first order of business is to approve the court minutes for regular opening of January twenty second. Special reading, January twenty fourth. Emergency meeting, February the fourth. Special meeting, February nineteenth. The layman make a moment.
First of all, we've, uh, we've watched the tape, watched the films, amended of each of these meetings. And we've got several corrections.
What happened?
So I'd like to enter them at this time.
Okay, which one you got?
Well, January twenty second, two thousand nineteen meeting. Page one, line, line two. It should say, instead of Judge J. O'Nobles, it should say Judge Jeff Nobles.
Okay. Oh, stick it behind you.
Yeah, it should include, uh, all elected officials who were present, introduce themselves, should be inserted when. That's number eight and number nine, line number eight and number nine.
Line number eight, Judge Jeff Nobles leading prayer, take a lead.
Well, it should be, it should be at all elected officials present.
Will you want it first page?
Right, line number eight. It says, that's what you're talking about. That one, in the form. Yeah, or says Judge Nobles led the pledge of allegiance, it should also state, uh, all elected officials present, introduce themselves. That's on line eight. Okay, line number seventeen. Uh, it says January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, emergency meeting, corrections. Okay. It should be, it should include submitted by Master Donnie Bush and after the word corrections.
He's off again.
Line number seventeen, after the word corrections, it should state submitted by Master Donnie Bush and after the word corrections. Okay. Going down to, uh, line number thirty-three.
Okay, Tim, Tim and Alex, are you just ready to begin the meeting then?
That'll be the last, line thirty-three should be the last line on the first page.
Discussion of January twenty nineteen claim.
Right. It should say discussion of January nineteen vendor claims, which totaled three hundred seventeen thousand, three twenty-six, one ninety-eight.
Three seventeen, was it a three fifteen?
No, three sixteen. It should, it should state discussion of January two thousand nineteen vendor claims, which totaled three sixteen, three two six.
Never where the vendor at?
Yeah, it should include discussion of January nineteen vendor claims, acceptance claims.
Win? You have a win.
That's line thirty-three, second page, they're all the same, January twenty-second meeting. Line number ten. Motion carried by, show of hand should be deleted.
Motion show of hand should be what?
Deleted. Line number fourteen. And line number fifteen was not stated.
Want you to say Jeff Nobles, your discussion didn't, would ought to be overlooked by the county?
Well, I was, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see that either. Same as, uh, same as line number fifteen. Fourteen, fifteen.
Got it.
Okay, line number sixteen, which says motion by Royder Earl, second to Ellis Tensher, approved instead of Paving. It should say motion was made by Ray Moore instead of Royder Earl.
Ray Moore and Royder Earl?
Yes.
Okay, we had Royder Earl already on it, so we need to put Ray Moore instead of Ellis.
Ray Moore made, made the motion, instead of Royder, instead of Royder. Right, line number twenty. Instead of motion made by Ray Moore, it should be motion made by Royder Earl. And take out the word, January.
Take out the word what?
January.
Well, now that motion by Ray Moore, second to Bill was Tensher. They've made our Royder Earl?
Yeah, not Ray Moore.
Take out the word what?
January. Line number twenty. Okay. Alright, line number twenty-three, line number twenty-four. It should say Judge Nobles informed the fiscal board that as of today, in the morning, Johnny Stacy had broken no pay. He went on to say that Mr. Stacy was currently laid off, in equal contract, withdrawn on the form. Master Ellis Tensher questioned if the judge's appointment was legal and raised concern about the liability. Master Donnie Bush asked if the acts were compliant with statute. County attorney Brendan Miller advised Judge of dissection. Brendan's office of taste stated that his actions concerning the appointment were legal and would present an over the liability. Judge Nobles shared the fiscal board he was. It's line twenty-three, before the shut up. Okay, line number thirty-five, line number thirty-six, bottom page. Should be, should bring, Master Donnie Bush attempted to make a motion before Master Bush declared a motion. Judge Nobles warned him that he will not be accepting any motions.
Okay.
Second page three. Between lines four and five. It should be add that discussion was held concerning what is entitled, what's been upheld in the procedure, followed by the county. When adopted rules to the county road plan. Master Bush asked County Clerk Becky Curtis if she turned over the review supplement check to the fiscal board in two thousand eighteen. Ms. Curtis said that she did turn it over. Takes care of, uh, January twenty-second. January twenty-fourth. Line number nine. Says Judge Nobles stated the court could not come to an agreement on items three and four, agenda. And Donnie Bush opened guard three and four should be deleted. And so is, so, should, line number eleven. Should be, should state that Judge Nobles stated he was tabled out of three, four, or five, or six. Master Bush raised his hand and was recognized to speak by Judge Nobles. Motion by Donnie Bush, second by Ellis Tensher. Overall, the judge's decision to table items. Judge Nobles refused to recognize Bush's motion because of the vote. Discussion was held concerning parliamentary procedure and wrongful rule of order.
Okay.
Okay. Line number twelve. Instead of stating approved, table items, it should say postpone the deputy discussion of items.
Okay.
Okay. Between lines fourteen and fifteen. Should state that county attorney Brendan Miller informed Judge Nobles that caused this motion to be definitely postponed to happen failed. Out of three, four, five, and six must be addressed. Judge Nobles opened item three. And raised a rule of Brez County Clerk's calendar year two thousand nineteen budget for discussion. Okay. Between lines sixteen and seventeen. It should state that motion by Judge Nobles, second by Royder Earl, table items three. Motion failed by a vote of two to three, which Master Bush, Moore, and Tensher voted nay. And also line seventeen, motion was made by Ellis Tensher, not Donnie Bush. Okay, line number eighteen, it should add with the incorporation of suggestion, suggested amendments submitted by matters after the word vice, basis of them. Line number eighteen. And take out everything after word basis. Okay, line nineteen, should say. Judge Nobles announced that he wasn't recognizing Tensher's motion. County attorney Brendan Miller informed Judge Nobles that since his motion tabled item three and failed. The item was open for discussion, that he must accept any motion made concerning that item. Master Ellis Tensher repeated his motion, and Master Ray Moore seconded again. County attorney Brendan Miller reiterated that, uh. Because items open for discussion, motions could be made and seconded, that the judge must call the vote. Motion by Judge Nobles, second by Royder Earl, postponed discussion of item three indefinitely, no vote was taken. County attorney Brendan Miller informed Judge Nobles that he must call a vote on Master Tensher's motion prior to introducing, pertaining any other motion. That should the judge refuse to call a vote, he will be in violation of the office rule of order and provision of the county administrative code. Judge Nobles again refused to call a vote, motion by Judge Nobles, second by Royder Earl, to adjourn the meeting until two P M. Sheriff John Hollis asked permission to speak before the court, major's decisions concerning the jury. Judge Nobles declined to allow the sheriff to speak. Master Bush asked how the judge exempted could make a motion to recess, although it is a motion, and he seconded on the board concerning the clerk's budget. County attorney Brendan Miller again advised Judge Nobles that he must call the vote on Master Tensher's motion, that it's wrong of vote. Judge Nobles again refused to call the motion to vote. Motion by Judge Nobles, second by Royder Earl, to recess the meeting until one fifty P M. Judge Nobles recessed the meeting until one fifty P M without calling a vote on the recess. Okay. Line number twenty, line number twenty-two. Should be deleted. Line number twenty-three. Delete everything prior to the word votes and replace with Judge Nobles calling a vote. Master Tensher's earlier motion, which as follows, to approve the purpose two thousand nineteen budget. On the line item basis, with the incorporation of suggested amendments submitted by the matters.
By the master, to the only question?
Yes, submitted by the matters. Page number two. Prior to, prior to pace, I mean, prior to line one. It should say Judge Nobles announced that the items four, five, and six up for discussion. And also line number one.
Okay, now that, what you just read while I'm going on the plate, read that again.
Judge Nobles announced that he was open. Item four, five, six, on page two.
Yeah, announcer called, it says Jeff Nobles called the court back in, when they found out to the.
It should, it should state this, you know, in actual means right here, it's the open, it's, it don't say anything. Page two, you don't, page two.
Okay, when you said Jeff Nobles announced, mine got Jeff Nobles called before back in, so you want to announce, put down a, put a call?
My page don't say that. A minute, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, page two. Should say Judge Nobles announced that he was open in that item four, five, and six for discussion. Also on line number one, the motion was made by Ellis Tensher, not Ray Moore. Motion was seconded by Ray Moore, not Donnie Bush.
Okay, now, you say Ray Moore made a motion, now you got a motion by Donnie Bush.
That's what I'm saying.
So he's saying the Ray Moore, and you said Ray Moore was seconded then?
No.
Okay, how do you get it?
The motion was made by Ellis Tensher, instead of Ray Moore. Motion was seconded by Ray.
Okay, mine got motion made by Donnie Bush.
Right.
You said that supposed to be Ellis Tensher.
Motion was made by Ellis Tensher.
Mine got seconded by Ray, and you say that seconded by who?
It was seconded by Ray.
Okay, go ahead, I thought you wanted.
No. Motion was made by Ellis Tensher instead of Ray Moore.
Yeah.
And the motion was seconded by Ray Moore, not Donnie Bush.
Mine got motion made by Donnie Bush, it don't say Ray Moore, mine.
That's what I'm saying, that's. It should, it should state, motion was made by Donnie Bush. Right, correct. Correct.
Okay, he's saying Ray Moore, mine got Donnie Bush.
But Ellis Tensher made the motion instead of Ray Moore.
Mine got Donnie Bush, Ray Moore, he's seconded by Ray.
I'm on page two. January forty-fourth, two thousand nineteen meeting, page two. Okay, also on line item, line number one. Well, we passed that. Should say before the word maximum shouldn't, should say calendar year two thousand nineteen.
Okay, through maximum order, it should say what?
Right before maximum, it should say C Y two thousand nineteen. Then line number two. Should delete everything after two hundred five thousand. Replace with and add health insurance as an expense. Okay, line number three. Should say health insurance, it should be deleted. Officer, you should replace the word read.
Replace the word read. Now, it says read health insurance.
I think it should take it out, read.
Take the word read and read and health insurance.
Line twelve. The word agenda, it should state that Judge Nobles stated that because Johnny Stacy is drawn on the form. He wouldn't be covered on workers' compensation if he was injured, bottom of twelve.
Well, that item number seven always was one of them. So you just need to, number seven, I have what you just stated, go ahead.
Line number twelve, I'll commit to you.
Go ahead. You said move out of number seven.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
Should state after the agenda.
Okay, got you, win.
Line number fourteen. After thirteen hundred forty-five thousand dollars, it should state invoice for bridge work. Between, right, for thirteen hundred forty-five thousand dollars.
Invoice for when you bridge work?
Of course, it's bridge work.
What bridge, you know, that's about done.
That's what Johnny Karen will go.
I bet it's way long that never.
Line number fourteen, we're gonna know that. Line number fifteen.
Wait, wait, back up, in the amount of thirteen hundred, Johnny, you're in the amount of thirteen hundred forty-five dollars.
For, it should state invoice.
Invoice for the swing of bridge work?
Well, bridge work.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, between lines fifteen and sixteen, should add. Master Ellis Tensher discussed the necessities and details concerning the two bridges repaired by Turner. Okay, line.
Now, what you say?
Should state between lines fifteen and sixteen, Master Ellis Tensher discussed the necessities and details concerning the two bridges repaired by Turner. Okay, line number twenty-one. It was seconded by Donnie Bush, not Ellis Tensher.
Mine said motion, but it was seconded by Donnie.
It should state it was seconded by Donnie Bush instead of Ellis Tensher.
Ellis made a motion, he made a motion.
Royder. Line twenty-one. Motion made by Royder Earl, seconded by Donnie Bush.
What line, yeah, mine got that.
This is the third one from the bottom.
Uh, that's on motion to gurn, right?
Right.
Okay, who made a motion?
Royder.
I said motion by Royder Earl, seconded by Ellis Tensher, approved to gurn.
Should state, seconded by Donnie Bush.
Oh. Okay.
Alright. The word force, emergency meeting. Alright. Okay, line number one. After word two. Insert forego, establish in the role supervisor position.
Wait, 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 now, line number one, I was feeling on the wrong page, mine said.
Skip that name.
The Brez County Bureau of Court, committee of emergency service.
You on page two.
Go on, line two. Okay.
Okay. Line number one. I'm sorry, page, page one's okay. Okay, we'll go on to the next page of February fourth.
I thought take one, it's a no, you know, we have to take.
Yeah, mine's like, full page two. Page one's alright. After word two.
Now, what, 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 I knew.
The first one on the second page, first line. After word two. Insert forego, establish in the role supervisor position. To instead, approved by established role supervisor. It should also say pursuant, after word approved, it should say pursuant to calories, from seven nine, four, oh, two, oh, per rep five.
Now, where were the calories, what time?
Right, the word approved.
What time? I thought you had a group four going, that way you got eight too.
Yeah, I thought that, it's gonna be in it too.
What were the calories?
One, seven, nine, one, oh, two, oh, per rep five. The word establish, should be establishing.
Should be what?
Establishing.
Establishing.
Right.
Establishing to establish.
Yeah. Line number two. Change the word supervisor to supervision.
It's still supervisor, what?
Uh, supervisor. Line number three. Take out everything after word conversation. Insert, this committee will be charged with the supervision of maintenance and construction of county roads. Line number four, take out the word approve and.
Move on.
Line number four, take out the words approve and. Line number six. Change the word supervisor to supervision. Between lines eight and nine. Insert motion by Donnie Bush, seconded by Ellis Tensher, to approve the amended motion. Motion carried with a three to one vote, with Master Royder Earl voting nay.
Mine said voting to Donnie Bush, nay, and Royder Earl, nay, Ray Moore, nay, and Ellis Tensher, nay.
Yeah, but it also should include.
It was also gonna say three to one.
Motion by Donnie Bush, seconded, seconded by Ellis Tensher, to approve the amended motion. Motion carried with a three to one. But they voted three to one, with Master Royder Earl voting nay.
It's not the same, mine said that Donnie Bush voted nay, and Royder Earl nay, but if you said the amendment, it was three to one. It's not the same, I said that Donnie Bush voted nay, Gordon Earl, nay, but if you said amended, it was three to one. Would they call you in there?
Yeah, all you got here.
Okay, call you in there, really.
Okay. Line number nine.
I have a line, I'll add that.
Line number nine, we say discussion here regarding fiscal court clerk. Should say discussion here regarding fiscal court clerk position.
Position?
Right.
We've got one county clerk, fiscal county clerk here, uh, for you.
Right. Line number ten, motion was made by Ellis Tensher instead of Donnie Bush. Motion, was, motion was taken by Donnie Bush, but not Ray Moore.
Right.
Line number fourteen. Change the word pool to pooling.
Change it from pool, pooling?
Yeah, pooling. And also change word agreement to arrangement.
Uh, great.
Line number twenty-two. Change word prescribed to present.
Present.
Yeah. Like for that. Except that. Another thing. This is February eighteen. Okay. Line number eight. Add Ellis Tensher, after word Bush.
Should say one hour?
Should, Ellis should be added in, since it says, Master Donnie Bush and Ray Moore called meeting.
On line number eight?
Yeah. February eighteen meeting.
And I said, Master Donnie Bush and Ray Moore called meeting for the Ferguson, Ferguson person.
It should include Ellis Tensher.
Should include Ellis?
Right.
If they want to sign on that fair, it's been on my normal. Oh, what? But I got it in there, go ahead, no big deal.
Okay. Line number eleven, where it says discussion for two hour week. Take out everything after word on, and replace with county judge's executive order. Reducing all county employees to a thirty-two work week, hour work week. Master Bush pointed out that the judge has continued to allow select employees to work full forty hour weeks.
You want all that, like in a meeting, it's still saying different discussion here on a thirty-two hour work week. That's different.
You just got discussion here on thirty-two hour week.
Yeah. Work week, what you just got those saying, uh, common code for thirty-two hour?
It should state, should be replaced with the county judge's. Executive's order. Reducing all county employees to thirty-two hour week. Master Bush pointed out that the judge had continued to allow select employees to work full forty hour weeks, and that other employees had complained to Master stating that they felt as though they had been retaliated against by the judge and were considering seeking legal counsel.
All that in motion.
Discussion.
Okay, go ahead, still saying, any discussion of thirty-two hour work week, go ahead.
Bush went off to state that in a discussion on February first. Judge Noble admitted to him and two additional witnesses that the reason he had reduced employees thirty-two, thirty-two hours because of fiscal court would not approve his role supervisor, vital nominee at an annual salary of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Right, go ahead.
Line number nineteen. Should be deleted and replaced with Judge Noble discussed at county shut down.
Now, line number nineteen on line, it says nineteen hundred fifty.
Should say discussion here on county shut down. Line number nineteen.
Okay, discussion here on county shut down, what should it say?
Line number nineteen should say, state Judge Noble discussed at county shut down.
Now, if the discussion here on county shut down, do you wanna, do you wanna read it?
Yeah.
I agree, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, line twenty, twenty-one. Should be deleted.
Twenty and twenty-one?
Right.
No, cause I know, for a matter of fact, I asked employee that they clocked in, told them not to turn to work, and they refused to leave the meeting. If you want to pay them, I don't, I don't have any burden, but I don't let them.
I want to pay them.
And I didn't say, wait, I clocked in, I'm not bothering clocking in? I think so, you go ahead, go ahead, we take that, that's a good thing.
Okay. Between. Line twenty-five and twenty-six. Should state Judge Noble attempted not to recognize Bush's motion, however, county attorney Brendan Miller advised him that he was required to recognize it and called the vote.
Line. Where does it say, Jeff Noble, Rick, what'd you say?
Between line, lines twenty-five and twenty-six. Okay, line twenty-nine. Take out the word acting.
Between twenty-nine and twenty-six is the point, man. You want us on between the lines, that's why I'm straight. Say again, I can't believe it.
Judge Noble attempted not to recognize Bush's motion, however, county attorney Brendan Miller advised him that he was required to recognize it and called the vote.
Didn't do it or attempted not to.
Attempted not to recognize Bush's motion. However, county attorney Brendan.
What was, what was the motion?
Between line lines, line twenty-five and twenty-six.
There was a motion, all right.
The motion was made by Donnie Bush, second by Ray Moore to approve, to return all county employees to a forty hour week, effective immediately.
Okay.
So it follows, Bush, a, Gordon Earl, no, Ray Moore, a, Ellis Tensher, a, motion carried. Okay, line twenty-nine, take out the word acting.
That's the word one?
Acting. Take out.
Acting?
Acting.
One, have a twenty-nine, so our discussion here on item D?
Yeah.
Now, they got action in there, it says Jeff Noble, they have a eight forty-two meetings, uh.
So.
They got a acting on it?
Yeah.
Okay, late forty-two, I say, did I was a acting or a form, or just broke one?
It should, the word acting should say, a broke one, in these.
What did you want to take out?
The word acting.
Okay.
Take out the word former, replace the supervisor.
Take out the word one?
Former, replace the word supervisor.
Take out the word former, put supervisor.
Come on.
All right.
Okay, lines, between the lines thirty and thirty-one, should state, should add. Master Donnie Bush asked about the role of mark supervisor committee. As the fiscal board established on February fourth emergency meeting. Judge Noble responded by stating that he was the role former and he was called shots.
Did I say that I'll be role, uh, role supervisor? Do you want me to put, I'm called shot? Still called shots, or?
Some tape, that's what some tape, right.
Can I say something? Actually, was the, was the fiscal board clerk, and she requested the tapes twice, and did not actually.
Let's go ahead and leave it, just leave it there.
This, we just bring the important tape. This being said.
It's a little bit difficult to keep on.
I think she's done a lot of good job herself.
This, this concludes January eighteen meeting, the, the meeting's, the minutes question.
January eighteen?
February eighteen.
Well, I doubt that it was eighteen. You said January eighteen?
Yeah. I make a motion to amend the minutes with the approval in the next court.
Someone would ask you to restate that, make a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments made in the amendments that I just read. With the approval, vote on it, on the approval of these minutes at our next meeting. That way we will have time to look them up. And watch the tapes.
So you're gonna take one until next meeting?
I make a motion to amend, uh, make the changes that I just read today.
Should we not get a look at the tapes?
That's what I'm stating, I've got a motion on the floor.
Okay, now, he made a motion to amend it, uh, ever had y'all here today, say it. He made a second, didn't he?
I make a motion to.
I second.
Just consider also the changes in the minutes and be voted upon.
Okay, and what would you say then?
I move to make a motion to accept the change in the minutes as I have stated. And be voted upon. At future's meeting.
I'd like to vote, we, we.
I've got a motion on the floor, Gordon Earl.
Hey, we in here another out brace, or, uh, Sniggy, you're going up to go on, we in here to take care of business. We've already been forty-three minutes, here in meetings, we mean, so we ain't got time for this, this stuff here. Donnie Bush has got a motion on, or is that second?
Second.
Second by Ray Moore. Go over there, go. Ray Moore. Yeah.
Ah.
Done.
Ah.
Motion carried. Uh, consideration of approval of fuel vehicles. I, I give, I.
Did you give him, I give him a copy?
An amount of eight thou, on the four hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. You have a motion. Yeah, I'm, if you don't know it, it probably isn't in the meeting. I would tell you, we don't pay this by, per court reason on the twenty-six, that we'll be able to draw a five to six hundred dollar payment. So I'm gonna make a motion to pay approval of the fuel vehicle for West Bank, clearly they probably, uh, give you more.
Second.
Name of Gordon Earl. Ray Moore.
No.
Ellis Tensher.
No.
Donnie Bush.
No.
Gordon Earl. Motion paid. Uh, consideration approval of the three one twenty-nine ten claim list. Motion. He made a motion? Gordon Earl made a motion to approve the claim list for three one nineteen, you have a second? Vote for that, like I said. Uh, approval of point Johnny Stacy and Ruth, road supervisor for four years.
Motion.
You have a second? I second that. Ellis Tensher.
No.
Donnie Bush.
No.
Gordon Earl.
Yes.
Ray Moore.
No.
Motion paid.
We, uh.
Consideration and approval of distribution payment of nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars to Love Cat Construction for test drilling on FEMA project, uh, forty-three fifty-eight. This is the one we made a motion to drill, uh, I mean, bit out. We had to pull it back out of paper, because people on one of these sites all core drilled, before we could bit them out. Uh, he got that dollar, and it was thirteen sites, uh, is that right?
Yes.
There was a couple of them, they thought they didn't have to drill, but people on them all drilled, so we make sure we put the right bits of steel on their end.
I make a motion, make like that.
It's still, can you wait, motion?
There was twelve sites, Judge.
Was it twelve?
Yes.
Okay. If I was wrong, it's twelve sites.
I appreciate you trying to get these fixed.
Look, I'm, 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 I'm.
No.
But, 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 I was on these, these is.
Been a long time since they done anything like this, buddy.
Yeah.
Majority of it, see, you're.
We got motion to approve, approve claim by Ellis Tensher, you have a second?
Second.
And second by Ray Moore. Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Gordon Earl.
Ah.
Ray Moore.
Ah.
Ellis Tensher, girl.
Ah. Gordon Earl, but go on, we'll get your, one, three, put it in.
I make a motion in the earnings meeting, come second.
Let's, I need, I need something. If we're, I wanna pay this, uh, Love Cat Construction, I'll need the approval to do a budget transfer from.
That's what I wrote, I'm on it.
It comes out of O two ninety-two hundred nine ninety-nine, reserved for transfer, and it will go into O two sixty-one oh five four four seven FEMA projects.
I like that motion, try to remember, I'm going to take it, but he drove the things to make here.
We, uh.
These are road, if it's been picked back in seventeen, he probably be there.
That's true.
Motion.
This is part of a hundred one thousand, some one hundred.
Two, that's part of, yes, that's a part, yeah.
Okay, here, let, let, uh, go ahead and get making, uh, my other party just to do it. You have amendments?
Yeah, I will, okay.
And she, she.
Transfers, you gonna bother with that?
This is a budget transfer, and we need to transfer nineteen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars out of the O two, which is the road, reserved for transfer. We're gonna transfer it into the line item of O two sixty-one oh five four four seven, which is FEMA slash NRCS project for nineteen thousand nine seventy-five to pay Love Cat Construction for test drills on FEMA forty-three fifty-eight.
Ellis made that motion.
I second.
Second. Second by.
Right second, you're right.
No.
I say one, I say one.
Right second.
Yeah.
Never say.
Gordon Earl. I didn't hear, I didn't hear, I don't know.
It don't matter, I don't care.
Okay, I hear you, but now, second.
It don't matter.
It does matter, cause I don't want to be correct, really. Next second.
I want to say, right second.
They have to take a vote.
I did, yeah, yeah, I said it, I'm sure they're done.
I have a right second, so I'm open and right.
It don't matter.
It would, we had.
I heard right second, okay. Make the motion, right second, how about the A? We'll take it, okay.
I have, I want to ask, make one.
Just for that.
Ellis, ah, Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Ah. So, I'm looking at that. I made a motion during the meeting. Yeah, I said. I made a motion, uh.
Can we not, during, during?
I didn't say, too.
Ray Moore.
Your motion.
I got a question, question, question. I got a motion on the floor during the meeting, I'll take it, Gordon Earl. I got a motion on the floor during the meeting, I'll second by Roy Darrell.
Okay, Roy Darrell's second.
Donnie Bush?
For both? I, I need to discuss.
I hear you, mate.
So he said, nah, you got some hostile during.
I know, so he, he said no. To pay this.
I don't think I said you did.
Okay.
Well, I don't think you directed.
Did you say I on the, paying the Mud Cat?
Yeah, they all said that, yeah, Ellis, did you say I, no during?
No, no, Don.
Right, that's fine.
Oh, no, during.
But you said I. Right?
No.
Now you're on the during, you say.
No.
You almost fell on?
Yeah, somebody got some quick, there.
I just have one quick question for the jury, you should see, well, nothing, uh, we aren't getting it in my room.
This is a special meeting, I have to go with my record, it's on the agenda. You deserve to talk to me.
I think, what's on the?
It's on the agenda. Okay, um.
I mean, it's just a simple question, it's nothing to. It's just for the record that who is active role forming for the ready handle of the party? Could you say that for the record, please?
Acting, that's not on the agenda.
I don't know if.
The action, it's gonna say.
Well, I just, I just get to the meeting. That's fine.
It's the opinion of the attorney's office, and that, uh, the agenda has gone through, and everything's been addressed, um, there's, the only thing about those supervisor on the agenda, was approval to the point.
Holding down, it's like that for him.
It was holding down.
The thing I said to do in the jury, I guess, to say you're telling.
I didn't think he was even on the front, except for litigation, but.
No, when, uh, two, we have, we have people on the list, and you can be addressed on the, on the meeting, you think you brought, uh, special meeting, only things that you brought, it's what's up.
But Johnny Stacy can't be brought in, they're sneaking emails and litigation, I think.
The only thing that brought up on the agenda today was the approval for a point of, uh, Johnny Stacy, supervisor.
I think we have, I have options to pay.
Is he in that?
Is he in that?
Is he in that?
Is he in that?
I'm saying that it is a special meeting, and.
That's the only thing we can discuss, we can discuss.
Point of the, under the, paragraph number five, which is the Johnny Stacy point of Johnny Stacy, role supervisor.
We can, we can't discuss Johnny Stacy.
You did, you voted on him, you discussed, but.
I didn't have opportunity to.
Well, it's the vote.
Any discussion? We voted, no.
What, what do you make of the point down?
He's here, I say.
Or, when the vote was going on.
Only thing, hey, I'm running this court, I'm running this court, the only thing we got to have to do is either anything else, or then it's good.
You like opened up for discussion with Johnny Stacy.
Nothing ain't on here. You voted it down.
Ain't on here.
You voted it down, we're ready to jury and so on.
So you're not.
I'm gonna make another motion to the jury this meeting.
I got a question, back.
You got a second?
I gotta go with a question, concerning, uh. Uh, meaning here. Just, just a statement, it's concerning the fuel bill. I won't mention the gravel bill, but how, I know everybody wants to fix the roads in the county, but how can you fix anything if you don't pay your bills, your gravel, and your fuel bill?
That's good, everybody else, why, that's why are we sitting here with, and nothing, no legally?
That's okay, if they catch you, I'll.
Not legally, I can fix anything.
It's it, I made a motion, I made a motion during this meeting.
Do you know what reason why we, we ain't paying nothing?
Donnie, hey, I made a motion during this meeting, don't worry about me, buddy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you what takes a minute. I made a motion during this meeting, can have a second.
I take it.
Ray Moore?
No.
Ellis Tenter?
Ah.
Donnie Bush?
No.
Motion carried.